All right, good evening and welcome everybody to the strategic plan work session. It is 4:40 on January 7th. I am taking the helm for the first part of this meeting because we currently do not have a board chair because that'll be determined at the organizational meeting which will be scheduled right after this meeting. So with that, I want to give wish everybody a happy new year, welcome. It's so great to see everybody. Before we call this meeting to order, I do want to share with you all that this is a really big deal to work through this strategic plan. This is going to be one of many meetings that we will be having with you all to discuss the process of developing this new strategic plan. Our current strategic plan does expire at the end of this year, so this will go into effect next school year. So with that, I would like to call this meeting to order and we do have an agenda before us.
Mr. Dr. Hummer, I'd like to second that.
Dr. Hummer, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda that's before us.
And second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And with that, I will now hand it over to Mrs. Knight and Innovate K-12 who will be walking us through the first stage of this process. Thank you, Mrs. Knight.
You are so welcome, Dr. Hummer, and good afternoon, everyone. Happy New Year. Welcome back. It is always great to see you. We are so excited about today because we really get to start the work that we've been waiting for and that's where we get to collaborate together about our shared value, our shared vision for where we'd like to take our district for the next five years. And not to my delight, of course, we can't do all of that today, but we're going to prime the pump and get started. So the educator in me has an activity for you and I'm going to walk you through those directions in just a moment here, but before I do that, you already know me, I want to take a moment to turn over the mic to our planning partners. I am really excited about the opportunity to work with Innovate K-12 and before we begin this workshop moment, I'm going to give them a chance to introduce themselves.
Steve. Okay, I'm gonna start then and hopefully Steve will join in on this. I'm Evan St. Lefter of Innovate K-12. We're excited with my colleague Steve Merly who I assume is there.
I am.
Ah, there you are, perfect. So I'm Evan St. Lefter. Our lead advisor is Steve Merly. I'm going to let him take the home for right now, introduce the agenda, et cetera, get things set. We're excited to work with you, with the board, to lead this effort around strategic planning, get your very critical voice and the entire voice of all the different stakeholders in Frederick County Public Schools. And so with that, Steve, I will pass the baton to you. We're excited for this next hour to get some really substantive work done with you. We appreciate you making this time for us and Steve, please take it away.
Thanks. I'm really pleased to be here. My name is Steve Merly. I'm retired superintendent, 18 years in the saddle, retired out of Green Bay, Wisconsin. I also did a stint in Iowa City, Iowa, and after retirement, which I failed, I joined the faculty at the University of Iowa and I've been working with Evan and his team as they grow their strategic planning practice. So we have, we know that we need to be tight on our timing today, so we guarantee we'll get you out on time. And you can see the slides up there. We'll walk through a couple of just quick intros for you in terms of what we're going to do with the process, what the timeline looks like. And then as Assistant Superintendent Knight said, we're going to walk through an exercise with you to get you rolling on your work to help with input, to set the stage for us as we get ready to reach out to stakeholders both inside and outside the district to work on the mission and vision and then come right down that funnel with our focus on student performance.
All right, thank you so much, Steve. You guys are ready. We're excited. Evan, do you want to say something else?
I do. So we're just gonna, before we hand the baton back to Shanti for the exercise, we just did our intros and so we just thought we'd take a moment so you're aware of the process and the way we operate and the way we're going to be, again, starting with you as the leaders in the community and that the community has chosen as leaders to help set the direction for the district. And so you'll see that this is very much a rinse, watch, wash, repeat process. We hope we work with you to plan out our engagement and our steps which have been quite detailed. We've been just thrilled to work with Shanti and her team to begin to step, to create these steps for the strategic planning process. We're going to do a period of engagement beginning with you this evening and over the next two or three days through a survey and then we're going to open it up to the community. We collect this data, we analyze the voices, the sentiments, the lived experiences and the knowledge of the community. And then what's really so amazing is our ability to distill this down into insightful, prescriptive data that will serve as the basis for the strategic planning process. A little bit about us again is that we really want to be inclusive, so we want more people than ever before to have a voice in the strategic planning process. I'm sure you would agree. We're all about accountability and again, we're going to be helping you glean constructive, substantive ideas from the stakeholders across the community. And so that includes helping you define strategic priorities, again, that really strategic, intentional and diligent engagement. You'll see those sentiment analytics come up because we're going to get this rich data and again, that's where we get into rolling up our sleeves and the nuts and bolts of creating that plan with key insights, action items, et cetera. So with that, I'm going to hand the baton back to Steve to review the timeline and a couple of other pieces before we hand it back to Shanti for the exercise.
So just walking through real quickly, we know that you are on a tight timeline and one of the benefits of working with us is that Evan and his crew are able to work very quickly to synthesize large amounts of data that we hope to gather both from internal and external stakeholders. We will be doing that process in January through February. We'll be back working with the district team on that strategic plan and the key performance indicators which we'll talk about in just a moment here. And then we'll be back with you to review the plan in March with the goal of having that approved in April and as Superintendent Cummings said, then that's ready to roll on July 1 when you're ready to start the new school year. So back to today, the most important thing that we have to do is to set a direction. So it's a little bit like going on vacation. You got to decide where you're going before you can start the planning process and so we'll be working with you over the course of this next week here to get the what set. Once we've got that set, then we'll be able to turn that over to the district team and they can start to operationalize that and do the how. We've got a couple of just summary points in here for you about what we're going to do in terms of gathering this information and I'm going to turn that over to Assistant Superintendent Knight.
Thank you, Steve, and thank you, Evan. I really appreciate your help with that and just like the gentleman said, guys, we're just really excited. Just like we talked about during our board retreat, the most important thing was to capture your voices first, to have you set direction as our board for your vision for the work and then we will pull that information, synthesize it and start to engage our community. So today is really about an opportunity to start just priming the pump a little bit. Let's start to think about our thoughts about our school division. And so the educator in me decided, let's just do a small activity. I promise it's brief, non-threatening and really low stakes. So what I have in front of you, if you don't mind taking a look at that sheet that I gave you earlier that's outlined this way in a legal, on a legal piece of paper, says strategic planning document, and we're going to just kick it off because in order for us to start doing any vision setting, we can't set vision without knowing what we believe. So our first question of the day really centers around this prompt and I'm going to ask you to follow me on your sheet. I'm in the column on the left, so your personal values and aspirations. I would love for you to just take a few moments to think about your personal beliefs about education and what schools should represent for our community. What one word reflects the value or aspiration you most want to see in our district's work? And there are at least 30 words on here, but you only get to pick one. So you have a highlighter in front of you, you have a pen in front of you, so pick your tool of choice and highlight your one word.
You too, Dr. Hummer.
Ms. Knight, is this greeted?
Well, we'll see.
I didn't even study.
And if you're missing a word on there that you really feel that, you know, appeals to you that's missing, please by all means, just write your word of choice that works too.
We're just doing the left column, right?
Yes, sir. You guys let me know if there's anybody still working.
There's a lot of good words.
Lots of good words, right?
I don't know what half of them mean, so I just picked the one.
Testament.
And if it helps to take the pressure off, this won't be our first time encountering it, so we can always come back and visit and change our mind if we'd like to. So see what jumps out to you. All right, I think we are ready to move into column two. So now we have a word that's kind of sitting top of mind when we think about the purpose of schools. We have that word identified. Now I want you to think about our district as a whole. What word, one word, would you want others to associate with our schools when they talk about us, whether in the community or beyond? We're educators, but you let me know when you're ready. Mr. Atkins, you're good, okay? Mr. Funes, everybody's good?
Aye.
All right, here we go. So we are on the last portion for us just again, to begin to get our juices flowing, our brains working a little bit here. This is about legacy. Legacy, right? So when I think about this particular term, I am thinking about the future of Frederick County and how it rests on your shoulders as our board to set direction and we enjoy the opportunity to collaborate with you. So if I'm thinking of a legacy moment that describes our district when somebody looks back on it and you think about the children that make up this school division, I want you to think of one word that you would use to sum up what makes you really proud of our district and its students. What would that one word be? It feels like Jeopardy, right? All right, I see all pencils down and pens down at this time, so I think we're in a good place. If you guys are comfortable, no pressure, but if you'd like to share your word, I'd love to invite you to do so when we go through each of the columns so that the public can hear what you espouse, what beliefs you have, because those are going to help us set that direction. All right, so starting back in column one to the left again, thinking about your personal values, what was your one word that reflected the value or aspiration you most wanted to see in our work? And we can just go in any order.
Down the line, starting with Dr. Erskine.
Achievement.
Achievement.
Vision.
Vision.
Achievement.
Thank you.
Success.
That's, thank you.
Copycat.
Success.
Success, okay.
Diversity.
And diversity, gotcha. Thank you so much. All right, now we are in the second column and this one is about our one word that we want others to associate with our school district when they talk about us. So what would we be characterized as if we would be proud of that? All right, Dr. Erskine, back at you.
Achievement.
Gotcha.
Success.
Success, thank you, Mr. Funes.
Excellence.
Excellence, thank you, Mr. Atkins. Accountability, thank you. Mr. Sturdeman.
Achievement.
And Ms. Klein, thank you.
Achievement.
And achievement, thank you, Mr. Bell. All right, you guys are thinking like educators today. I love it. All right, and on our last column, this is all about our legacy, the pride that we take in the heritage here in Frederick County. What are we proud about when it comes to this beautiful, bountiful group of 14,000 students and growing? Where are we? Dr. Erskine.
Spoiler alert, it's achievement.
Gotcha, achievement. All right, Mr. Funes.
Determination.
Determination, so we are a determined community, I love that. All right, Mr. Atkins.
Determination.
Determination.
Leadership.
Leadership.
Opportunity.
Opportunity, mmm-hmm, switching us up a little bit.
Serendipity, oh no, that's not right. Opportunity.
And opportunity. All right, well, thank you guys for joining me in my rendition of Jeopardy. I'm kidding, it's not Jeopardy-like at all, but I really loved playing along with you. And now I'm going to turn it back over to our partners. Steve, take it away. Thank you, guys.
Wonderful, thank you. So as we set off on this journey, we've got some steps in front of us and initially, what we know is really important to do as part of the strategic planning process in setting that direction is to revisit the mission and the vision statements and in order to do that, we're going to need input from you. We're also going to need assistance in helping assess the appropriate priorities and the district goals and our end direction is to focus on that student achievement that many of you just mentioned and make sure that the students have the competences that they need to succeed as they walk across the stage and move on with life. I'm going to have Evan just take us over to the survey so you can actually see what we're going to send to you and then we'll walk through each of those elements in turn.
And thank you for that, Steve. While Evan's bringing up the survey team, this is just an opportunity for you to see as you began to start doing some of your think work around what you value, what's important to you, you're going to get an opportunity to really capture that in greater detail with the survey tool that Evan's getting ready to bring you, bring up for you. And so once he brings that up and walks you through it, then Steve's going to turn back around and walk you through each component so that you'll know how to take care of that. All right? Thank you. Evan, it's all yours.
All right, absolutely. So, oh, sorry Evan, go ahead.
No, all good, Steve. We're good.
So we want to make sure that we are able to capture as much information as quickly as possible as we walk through this and so the first thing that we're going to do is we're going to start with you, the board. So you'll each get a link to this. It gives you an opportunity on the select your name, there's a drop down there, you can indicate who you are and we're only collecting that to make sure that we know that everyone's had the opportunity to complete it and then if we need to do follow-up later on, we'll be able to do that. So as you go through the survey, again, we're going to start with that mission statement component and you can see the direction that we have again is the success of the FCPS students and we want to make sure that the mission statement is pointing us in the right direction. So we're going to ask you in each one of these sections to review these 10 items and unlike the exercise you just went through, we're going to let you pick three as you walk through here. So that first one is about mission and that sets the, those guide the decisions and inspire the action and reflect our commitment to the success of the students. The next section on there is vision and the vision allows us to align our efforts and to make sure that we have our stakeholders, both internal and external, in mind as we go through this and it guides our growth. Again, we've got 10 different items on there and we're going to ask you to select the three top ones of most important to you. After you get a chance to walk through the mission and the vision, now we're going to start looking at priorities. And if you had that graphic up there, you'd see that we're coming down the funnel, so we're getting a little bit more granular each time we do that. And in the priority section, again, we've got 10 things for you to look at there. These are the most important goals that require immediate focus and attention from the board and the district. Our next step as we move down that funnel is to look at district goals. These are the key objectives that guide the educational priorities and the organizational improvement, a direction that we are taking on behalf of our kids. I mean, I think you've got the idea here, we've got 10 of those for you to look at. We're going to ask you to choose three of those. And then the last one on there is our student competencies. Those are the skills, the knowledge, the abilities that we want our students to have so that they can succeed both academically while they're inside the district but also beyond after they walk. beyond after they walk across the stage and they move on in life. So again, we've got 10 of those there, and we'll ask you to pick three of those. So this is a relatively straightforward process in terms of those first five there where you're going to go through, you're going to look at each of those sets of 10, you're going to select your top three. You may not see everything for there. Yes, go ahead.
Sorry, I was just going to add, Assistant Superintendent Knight just took all of you through that exercise where you chose a word. We all believe that we're going to get a very good idea of your priorities around these different areas, and we're going to go back to the funnel and spend more time in just a moment. But it's important that we give you the opportunity here to have your voices heard. So you'll have an opportunity in these three fields to put down a word that means a lot to you. We heard a couple of you really get behind the term, the concept, and the ideal of achievement. You can expound upon that here. Voice is very important. Know that we'll be asking about voice in a significant way from the community. So I just wanted to let you know that that's there so that we give you every opportunity to have your voices heard.
If I may have a question?
Steve, I'm going to, please.
When you give us the opportunity to choose in the top three questions, I believe, would it be possible to put a sort of other category if we want to include like something different than what's been listed there?
You took the question right out of it.
Well, if there's something additional that you'd like reflected that's not there, I would capture it in that third open-ended comment box at the bottom. So if there's anything else on there that hasn't been captured.
So you want us to put it in the additional comment?
Yes, please.
And is there a limit to the number of characters we have in these boxes?
No, not to mileage, right, Evan?
That's correct.
Nope, so you can be generous with your thoughts. You can say under the priority section, none of these are the priorities I'm thinking of, but here are my priorities, and you can list them right in there, and their data analytics will be able to pull that, pull all of that information.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And Assistant Superintendent Knight, that's an encouraging question because we want all of you, as much as you feel comfortable, to lend your voice as detailed as you want that voice to be. And we always encourage that, and that results in richer data and frankly, better guidance by this board for the community. So it's really all good.
Agreed.
Thank you. And Dr. Erskine has a question?
Yeah, that follow-up, and I don't know, either one of our guests probably can speak to this, but if you could go back to that top of the first question, those 10 or so options that have already been established for us in each of these questions, are those boilerplate for you guys? Did this come from our district staff? Where were those populated?
These are the most common in each of those categories used by, used by schools in strategic planning, just generally speaking. So that's why you're not limited to those. These were more or less designed to say, here are some springboard ideas. If there's some additional ones you want to put in the comments, you're not being led, but we tried to, instead of giving you a list of 50 to choose from, we tried to create a cadence that was easy to follow. 10 and 3, 10 and 3, 10 and 3, because we know it's easy to get overwhelmed in words. And so if there are not enough that reflect your interest, then please use the comment section. But they're the most common that you see in just about every strategic plan.
Another question, how is the information delineated? Is, does all of our answers get put into an algorithm and you guys kind of, the computer spits out a strategic plan? How does it go?
Evan, you want to speak to that?
Yes, Ms. Knight, absolutely, we'll speak to that. Great, great question. Thank you so much for that. And that's really the crux of what we do really well, and what's so exciting about this opportunity is to capture the voice in aggregate. So what we do is, without getting too far down the rabbit hole with AI, we use what's called, some of you may have heard the term, a large language model. ChatGPT is known as that. However, we are using safe, diligent, and extremely research-based proprietary algorithms to distill down these, the aggregate voices, all the things that you're saying and clicking on, and we distill that down into a data analytics report. And so part of that is being able to create themes out of the diversity of the comments and text, what used to be known as complex data. Some of you may have heard of big data. Well, now, because of our work, we're able to take that and distill that down into really easy to absorb, insightful, deeper data analytics that the cabinet will be able to utilize for their strategic planning pillars and base concepts. That's helpful.
And Evan and Mrs. Knight also did another follow-up question to that. After the large language model spits out the results, we, and we don't like what it says, or we disagree, that's subject to be modified by us, correct?
We can change it at any point in this development process that you'd like. That's the beauty of it, is that we can stay close in connection with each other. You guys will get first dibs at seeing what that original report looks like and see if we are in a place where collectively we are in agreement that this is the vision we want to set. And what Dr. Merle is going to do is going to walk you through what each of those components mean. So when we're saying pick vision, what are we really asking? When we're asking you to pick your priorities, what are we really asking? And if you come back and you go, guys, these should not be our priorities, what are we thinking? We can come back and revisit.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
You got it, of course. Any additional questions, guys? All right.
So I'll just add, those are, those are actually really insightful observations and questions you have. And one of the things that we thought deeply about as we went into this was, do we just give you that open text box that you first asked for and just ask you write in what you're thinking? And part of our thought process on that was, rather than just that blank slate, to provide a little bit more direction. And as Assistant Superintendent Knight said, those terms that you see are the ones that show up across the country in vision and mission statements. And so we gave you those as a way to set the stage, but as was indicated, certainly not exclusive. And as a matter of fact, in all honesty, we prefer to work with just text space as opposed to using pre-formatted, but at the same time, we also recognize that this provides a little bit of structure for it.
So Steve, I'm going to talk back off the survey now and let you jump back into some of the work we need to do to come down the home stretch, okay?
Please do, thank you. And I'm watching my time here for you. So you're going to see as you walk through this process that our intent is to make sure that, as you already indicated, that this winds up being a back and forth process. And so as we gather information and as we distill that information, we'll be iterating that with you and with the admin team so that in the end, you develop something that works for your students and for your district. So Evan, if you can jump down and try not to give motion sickness moving through it, if you want to jump down to slide 20 with the mission statement on there.
Sure. One moment here. Okay.
While he's doing that, I'll tell you that in my work with districts and especially working with stakeholder groups in districts, setting a mission and vision, there's sometimes confusion with it, so we just want to make sure we set that out for you so that you understand what it is that we're looking for. That mission is what we're doing right now. It's the work that is happening on behalf of our kids and our community. So you can see that the focus is the present, what we do, who we serve, how we deliver it. And I just dropped an example of one that you could potentially use in a district. And again, you find these types of examples all over the country. They look similar, but at the same time, they're very contextual in the sense that they reflect the character of the community that they work with. So we will use your input and input as we go through this process with other stakeholders to make sure that what we develop in the end is something that reflects what your district needs and what your students need. And then Evan, if you want to move to the next one there. So the vision statement, when we look at the vision statement, we want to make sure, again, that we know where you're going. So that mission statement tells us what we're doing right now in the present, and that vision statement talks about the future, where the school district is heading, and the ultimate impact that you aim to have for your community and for your students. And you'll see that there's an example down there at the bottom. And then we know that you have already, you have those in place, but that part of the strategic planning process as this current plan comes to an end is to revisit those. This is your current mission statement. And if you looked at the current or the past two slides that we looked at, you could see that your mission statement actually would align well with what's in there, provided that you put a period after aspiring on there. And that gives you the opportunity to give a nice concise statement so that your students, your parents, the community really understands where it is that you are right now and the work that you're doing on behalf of students. The next slide shows you your vision statement. Again, that aligns with that idea about setting a course for the future. And we might actually want to look a little bit broader and a little bit further than that, and your input will help us as we figure out how that ties together with the mission statement that you've set. All right, so as we walk down that funnel, we're going to get your input first on mission and vision, and then as you saw in that survey, we're also going to ask about priorities and goals and competencies. And in that previous graphic, you saw we're really coming down a funnel there, and we're going from broad to granular on it. And what that helps us do is it helps us make sure that we're taking a look at the big picture, but we understand contextually what's happening in the classroom with the kids.
And thank you, Steve. I'm going to pause for just a moment to take any questions because I know this is a lot of information, and we tried to make certain that we could at least graphically represent it for you, because sometimes you'll see school districts use these terms interchangeably, and the truth is, there's no harm in doing so if someone says mission versus vision. And Evan, if you don't mind pulling that graphic back up just to make sure that they understand how your broad thoughts from the umbrella space, when you finally work that through, how do you want our schools to function? The vision is, where do you want us to go in the future in our most ideal state? What would Frederick County Public Schools look like, right? That's what we're chasing. And then if we were chasing that, then what priorities should we set? What should our focus be? If this is where we want to go, what should those main buckets that drive that work look like? And then from there, we will set goals to say, these are the goals that we're going to be measuring to get to those priorities. And then ultimately, when our students graduate, what competencies do we want to be able to say the Frederick County Public Schools community graduated students who could do these things? And that's exciting. So when that's, that's your legacy. These are the tools that my children, when they leave Frederick County Public Schools, can say they have, right? Because of the work we've done. What are those? Trying to figure out what's important to you. So just making sure you understand how that big, broad perspective narrows ultimately down to what do we want to make sure our students are equipped with when they graduate? Okay?
I do have a question, two questions, actually. The first is, is there a specific due date for the survey that you want from us?
Yes, we were thinking three days because it really will probably take you 10 minutes, but depends on how much time you want to spend. So we were thinking on the 10th. How do you feel about that?
January 10th, okay.
Yes, sir.
Friday.
Yes, sir. Unless anyone has any major objections to that, we've thought that would give you plenty of time. Even feel free, check some other school divisions, check, go on and do some Googling and, you know, just kind of wrap your head around it. We want you to feel comfortable. We don't want you to feel rushed with it. That's why we weren't going to have you do that part today. We just wanted to start getting you to think about it, and then you'll be able to leave with the survey and take your time.
Yeah, I'm off tomorrow, so I got all day to work on this.
Okay, great.
My second question is, would it be possible for us to get bios of Stephen and Evan? Just to know who they are, where they're coming from, and that kind of can allow us to know who they are better and work with them better, honestly?
We absolutely can do that, not a problem.
And if it's vice, I'm happy to share mine, so.
Because you want Dr., I mean, you want Mr. Bell's bio, we'll make sure we pass it along, but we're happy to do that. Yes, okay. Anybody else?
Two questions as well. Well, the first one's more of a statement rather than a question. So we talked about our top priorities and our goals. I know that one of the, the major setbacks we have here at Frederick County is our overcrowding, right? And I know that one of our goals that we've stated here on the board is to reduce that. I hesitate to kind of put that in our priorities for, for our strategic plan, just because I don't want to leave our fate into the hands of others when we, you know, let's work with what we got. Because quite frankly, what if we don't get the funding for something for middle schools, for elementary schools? And be able to work within what we have. Well, I would love to see us take on that overcrowding population and that, that issue that we have. I just hesitate to elaborate and, and put that into one of our top priorities, even though we all know it is. And then.
What, what you might offer is you, you might want to put learning environment in there, recognizing that that could be the opportunity, if things are successful, to make the appropriate adjustments and deal with the overcrowding issue. But at the same time, that's kind of a hope for the best, plan for the worst type of thing, because that way, if it doesn't pass, learning environment is still important because those kiddos are still going to be coming to school. You still need to make sure that you've got an environment that allows them to be as successful as possible.
Agreed, agreed. The, the second part would be, as we've talked about in instruction committee and on other committees and with the full board, I believe that everything we do can be a learning lesson, right? Whether it's positive or negative. And there's been some positives and negatives that's came out of Inspire 2025. I hope that we'll look at some of our successes and some of our failures with Inspire 2025 and encompass them in our strategic plan moving forward. I haven't seen how any of that's tied in here yet. I'm sure, you know, it will be. And, and I don't know if the folks over here at Innovate K-12 have had a chance to look at Inspire 2025 and kind of see what some of our heartburn was with it, some of our successes was, some of the successes that we have had with it. Because I don't want to reinvent the wheel on everything, especially if something's working. If it's broke, don't fix it. But we can improve upon it. So I would like to see some data and some feedback on that moving forward.
We can get them to work with us on that because I know we definitely have presented some during the instructional committee, and I think the truth of what mostly came out of that was our lack of data to be able to really provide informed decision-making moving forward. But we can get Innovate K-12 to look at our existing plan with us and the existing data and see if they can see it in a different way that may help us get some new insights. So I'll actually work with them to do that.
And it might, it might help if we could just forward them the YouTube video from that instruction committee meeting.
Okay.
You know, instead of taking up your time, somebody else's time to, to type out a long email when they can watch it and just take notes.
Yes, sir. We can do that, and I'll bring that information back at our next instructional committee meeting for you. And then regarding your first question, I think you're on to something. And I think a part of the work we're trying to do is while we may have some significant aspirations for what we want the future of Frederick County to look like, but I think the most important part of this work is really creating opportunities that are feasible for us to execute. So when we get to thinking about KPIs, which he'll talk about here soon, we want to be able to measure progress so that we can determine if we're on track. And if we're off track, it doesn't necessarily mean something's wrong. It may mean we need to make an adjustment and not necessarily abandon what we're doing, but we may need to take another look at something, or maybe we're missing a resource, or maybe we had aspired to do this, but we didn't get those 10 teachers that we were looking for, and we only got three, so we didn't get as far as we wanted to. Let's pivot and make a little bit of a shift. So the only way to know that is to have quality data metrics. And the only way to set quality data metrics is we have to put things in place that are actually attainable. So some of those things, to your point, Mr. Atkins, are outside of our control, but it's nothing wrong with hoping for them. Okay? Other thoughts? I know we are working on borrowed time, but I don't want to rush you all. But other thoughts? Your voice is important.
Perhaps as you're thinking about that, Director Atkins, I think that, I think that the KPI comment was one that resonated with me. I was actually just asking Evan to pull this slide up because I think one of the things that Superintendent Cummings and Assistant Superintendent Knight have made plain to us, as we've talked about this, is how important it is to make sure that we measure progress along the way and allow you as a board to form, to perform your governance function of doing that monitoring and evaluation and. And so as we build that in to this process, one of the things that you will see as we come out on the other end, as we get into March and April, is that the plan will have very specific KPIs in there so that you know whether or not you are on track, to what degree you're on track. If you're not meeting the expectation that was set, why is that the case? Do we need to monitor and adjust in order to make sure that we've got a realistic goal moving forward? And they indicated that that's a really important component of this plan, and so you'll see that as we get towards these latter stages.
Anything else you want to say about KPIs, Steve?
I think not watching the time here. So we know that, yep, we know that it's really, really important for us to start with your voice. As the representatives of the community, we want to make sure that we hear from you first, which is why we're coming to you with this initial survey. We appreciate the fact that the timeline is tight, and we're hoping that you can find those few minutes to respond to us between now and the end of the week. As Assistant Superintendent Knight indicated, those three text boxes do not have limits on them. The more input that we get in those boxes, the better off it is for us. So we would actually encourage you, if you've got the time and can provide the attention to it, that you do take the time to add additional thoughts beyond just responding to the requests in the previous five categories. So please do share with us, and as great a detail as you're willing and able to do, provide that to us by end of business day on Friday, then we will start our compilation process for the refinement of that data, which will allow us to move to the next steps. And with that, I'll turn it over to Evan or to Assistant Superintendent Knight for any wrap-up here.
Actually, I have a question, if I may.
Yes, Mr. Bell?
Sure.
Thank you. The, we're getting this survey. When is the next survey going out, and to whom will it go to?
So two things are going to happen next. Once we collect your information, we're going to use that to inform the development of the community survey, which we're going to be using to engage everyone else. That will get kicked off after Dr. Hummer does a quick, brief video, so we will have a video message going out to our entire school community, letting them know that we are excited and welcoming their voice to join us in our strategic planning process. Once his video goes out, that survey will be linked to that video, as well as a schedule for opportunities for the community to engage with us. We have a variety of ways to do that, which will include surveys, as well as focus group participation, and strategic planning committee participation.
And with that survey, will we get to see it before it goes out?
You may see anything you would like. So if you want to see that survey before we push it out, I can do that.
Because I'm wondering if, like, with this survey, it's, I assume it's going to have different questions on it?
It will have different questions because what we want to do is capitalize on the things that you guys have decided are your priorities and use that to inform the thinking so that the community can begin to choose from some of those options.
Now, will you be capturing data on ethnicity, gender, that sort of thing?
Well, that's up to us. Usually, we can decide how much information and how many demographics...
Demographics, that's the word.
That's right, you got it. How much of that information we think will be important and valuable. But I think it's, if you were asking me to weigh in, the truth is, the option is yours to make, but I think it's important to capture that information because what you want to do is try to collect voices from every diverse, you know, diverse corner of our community. And we want to really work hard by using multiple modalities to connect with our community so that we can kind of get folks to chime in who may not ordinarily do that. And that comes in your work. I'll be communicating, I have a meeting with principals next Tuesday, where they're, we're going to ask them to be able to put this information in front of their team. We have a meeting with coordinators coming up next week also, where we're going to be asking them as they're out in buildings, just shaking trees, really getting our community engaged and excited about joining us in vision planning for the next five years.
And finally, will the video and survey that goes out to the community be also in Spanish?
Evan, I don't think we talked about that. I know it's possible. Is that something we can do, right, Steve?
Yes.
Yes.
At least the survey, not the video.
Yes.
It is, it is possible.
Are you fluent in Spanish, Dr. Hummer?
Yes.
Okay, because I know that even, I know the survey for sure, but I know that if, I know there's a feature, I don't know if Evan's company offers it, but we can certainly make the video in Spanish, too. They have Canva that can do that, too. So we can look into that.
Thank you. That would be, I think, helpful in getting a return from that population for that diversity that we want to hear from.
Thank you. I appreciate that feedback. So any other thoughts?
Before we wrap, if I could just apologize, Superintendent Hummer, I was on with Superintendent Cummings yesterday, and so I introduced you or inadvertently used his title with you. So please accept my apologies for that.
I figured as much, no worries.
So thank you for that, Steve, and received. Any other feedback, any thoughts, questions, anything else you want us to consider before we prepare to get the updated survey ready for your review?
I just want to comment on how fantastic a session this was. You just kicked off an amazing, whatever we had, 54 minutes. You asked so many of the right questions around engagement, around perspective, around voice, wanted to be, you know, further involved in the process, and so that's all really important. You also mentioned another really critical thing, which is differentiation. And the answer is yes, we can slice and dice the data, and yes, it can be extremely revealing and show meaningful patterns when you decide on, you know, striating the data by either, you know, how many years someone's been in the district, or, you know, different types of demographics that will be really super helpful. Ultimately, as Assistant Superintendent Knight mentioned, it's up to you and the cabinet, et cetera, on what you want in terms of how you want the data sliced. But I think there's really great fertile ground and a lot of great questions to be asked, whether it's principals, or teachers, or parents, or students, or community members. And I think you're going to be excited about the rich breadth and depth and diversity of the data that you're going to, you're going to be getting from your constituents is going to help really inform the strategic planning process. So very excited and really thrilled Superintendent Hummer, Assistant Superintendent Knight to be here. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Merle. Thank you, Evan, and we just appreciate your support today. If our board does not have any final questions, then we are, I can't, that's not my word, adjourned, but we are not adjourned. But thank you guys so much for joining us, and thank you for your help today. I appreciate you.
Appreciate the time, fellows.
All right.
Any other questions, let us know. We're available, as Ms. Knight knows, we're available 24/7. So any other questions or issues? Please let us know.
We've spent a lot of time together.
We'll need your phone numbers.
Thank you, guys. You take care.
All right. Well, thanks, guys. Thank you, Mrs. Knight, looking forward to this process and working through this together. So with that, do we have a motion for adjournment?
Mr. Chair, or Dr. Hummer, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I second it. All right, we have a motion and a second on any discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.[1779.30][1779.30]